Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. We've got a couple of things that we wanted to bring up today. One is the residential incentive program, its policy that was approved back in 21. And the, I'm going to ask Steve to get up and just give an overview, if you don't mind, Steve, of that. It was put in place for a particular reason, and that was to address some of the housing that, that looks very substandard in, in, in some of the area neighborhoods. And it was meant to try to improve that housing situation with some of the people that either they're owner occupied or who are owner developers of that property. So Steve, if you can kind of give us a quick overview of that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilmen, Council members. So you're correct, it was revised in 2021. It was actually drafted and approved first time through in 2020. It was actually summer of 2020 when we passed the incentive program. At that time, it was funded for $50,000 and it had some criteria for qualifying that made it a little difficult to qualify once COVID came and we started to see real estate prices increase dramatically. So when we first started the program, it was a $120,000 threshold. The property had to be at least worth $120,000, or not to exceed $120,000. Once COVID came, that number crept up really quick. And so we convened again in 21 and made some revisions to that policy and raised that limit, that minimum or maximum limit to 200,000. And that's what's been in place ever since. Again, it was funded at 50,000 the first year. We didn't have a lot of participation that first year, so we, in the following years, dropped it down to 25,000. We have not exceeded that budget since inception of this program. Where I think our highest year was roughly 7,500, $8,000. We have one pending for this year, and it's honestly been pretty much the same participant every year that, that we've had any incentive awarded. It's been the same participant. So it's not a real popular program. I don't know why. We have taken some steps, even at the council direction, and placed notice, please consider our residential incentive program on our remodel permit applications. We still don't get a lot of activity. We have it on our website. It's just not, not a lot of activity for this program. But it serves a need that I think is good for our community, and if it was maybe better, better known, maybe we'd have more participation. Let's see. Other than the 5% rebate, which is a maximum of $5,000 based on the total project, regardless of what you spend, you cannot exceed a $5,000 incentive. We also rate, will waive the building permit fees, and we will construct a new sidewalk if it's deemed to be necessary for that particular home. The incentive program, when you look at the policy, it specifies what the incentive is. It tells you how you can qualify. It lists the documentation that is required to be eligible, which is basically making sure that the home is in good standing, that it's not subject to foreclosure or anything like that before we proceed, and then a list of improvements that qualify for the program. You do have to apply before construction begins ideally, so we can look at your list of expenditures, make sure that it meets those qualifying repair criteria. And then at the end of the project, if it's completed in a 12-month period, the city will cut you a check for the rebate. And that's it overall.
And the maximum is up to $5,000?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Not to be applied against, well, it's a rebate on money you've already spent on the house?
That is correct.
And primarily tied to exterior?
It can be interior and exterior, but we do ask that it's a $20,000 minimum investment. That's another qualifying criteria. If it's only $20,000, we ask for a $10,000. Well, we always ask that $10,000 of the repair costs are directed towards the exterior of the property so we can make an aesthetic improvement to the neighborhood.
And helps the neighborhood out?
Yes, sir.
Which again is part of the sidewalk business and so forth.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
You said that, is it primarily, you're seeing, it really doesn't really make a lot of difference, I guess, but you're seeing primarily one or two people that are, have utilized this several times?
Yes, sir.
And they are obviously owner developers of properties?
Yes, sir.
Redevelopers of the property?
Had one other person that was really interested in the, in the project or the incentive program. Unfortunately, they didn't, didn't qualify because the home exceeded the maximum value.
Okay. All right. Well, this has been brought up simply because it's another one of the programs that is put in place. It funded originally at 50,000 and then, and then dropped down to 25,000 per year, but the usage of it is, is, is not very good. And so the thought was, you need to look at those kind of programs. This is a development program, so look at those kind of programs off and on to see if this is something that is really needed. Is it accomplishing something, or if that money is better put into something else, you know, budget-wise? Because you, we're coming up onto a budget time here this year. And so that was the point here. And the idea was just to get this out for discussion and see if there's anybody on the council that, if you feel strongly one way or the other, or if you have any questions of Steve here, this is a good time to bring that up.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So, of course, I look at properties every day.
Yes, sir.
It is extremely difficult to find a property, and it's how the city, I'm seeing all Texas, under $200,000 in value right now. So I think that's going to limit our usage because of that issue. I think we probably need to look more like 250 instead of 200, because like I said, they're just not out there right now. And my other suggestion would be, I know it's on the building permit applications and on the website, but we might want to blast it on Facebook as well, just so that there's more people that are involved and know. And I think that's probably our, our best form of communication these days is social media. So I think we probably need to get that out there. But I would think that 250 is probably a better number than 200.
Great suggestions. Thank you.
Thanks for the input. To the committee?
How extensive is the application?
It's, the application is basically is letting me know you want to participate. It's the qualifying documentation that comes in maybe a little bit. It might seem like it's a little, little intensive, but we do ask for, you know, you current on your taxes, give us proof of that. So you have to go to the tax office, is the home in good standing, proof of insurance. So if we give you a $5,000 rebate, it doesn't burn down and then it sets there and needs to be, you know, demolition project. So there's not really anything on there that I think is real-time consuming, but it's probably a little overwhelming if you don't do this every day for a living and realize how easy it is to go get a tax certificate.
And there's no real way to streamline that even further, because we need to know all of that.
So I, I mean, I don't look at this all the time, so we don't use it all that often. But I did review it before I came here, and I really didn't see anything on the qualifying criteria that I felt was unreasonable. You know, the council at the time felt very strongly that we wanted you to be a U.S. citizen, and unless that's changed, that might be the, the only thing that, that we would want to reconsider. But that was pretty, you know, other than proving that you're a U.S. citizen, which I really haven't had that problem making that determination, that's, everything else seems like it's pretty straightforward.
Others on the committee? Brandon?
Just, I was just going to ask if any modifications to the numbers would make much a difference for getting participation. But like David said, I think, you know, raising the maximum, the maximum value will help at least qualify a few more properties. You know, I don't know if it'll help, it'll get more people taking advantage of it, but at least more properties would qualify.
I think that 200 was too low. I mean, this is, this is three years from my grade, so that's, that's hard. Raising it to 650, 75, I think we might get more interest, more activity on that.
Anyone else on the council?
I agree with Mr. Vasquez. I think the threshold is a little bit low considering how property values have appreciated in the last three, five, seven years, pick a number, and they just continue to go up. It is exclusively for single-family residents, and it is for homeowners, not for property, this rental property or anything. Is that correct?
Don't believe we have any limitation in that regard.
It can be.
I think we, we had that discussion, if I recall, you know, it's been several years, but I believe we actually had that as a discussion item and decided that, you know, we're really trying to accomplish improving the, the housing in the, in the city. And if it's investor-owned or privately owned, we were still accomplishing the same if we didn't limit that to only privately owned property. You might also, one point to think about is, we're in the 65% to 70% range of investor-owned property in Stevensville. So if we're trying to get our numbers, that may not be the way to do it. One other suggestion, if I may, a lot of the, the investors that we have in town, when they buy these lower-priced homes, it's so that they can demolish the home and, and build something new in its place. If we could somehow make that as a qualifying criteria as well, then we may have more that come, come in, if we're just really wanting to increase the numbers. That situation, of course, is already improving the area because it's taken down a, you know, a more, an older structure and building something new in its place. So that may not be something you want to entertain, but it is something that, that could increase the numbers, if that's what we're looking for.
And so there's, is it just 20, we've just budgeted $25,000 per year towards this program? So if, if it maxes out, we're only, there's only five people, we're only talking about five houses, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And we haven't had that many.
Yeah.
In any year.
No, sir.
Can I get clarification on something? Now, you said the sidewalk. Now, you say we would take care of the sidewalk on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, and that's huge. That's, you know, I mean, how many times do we see people coming in asking for sidewalk increases?
Yeah, we, we, right now, we have a program to do half the block of the sidewalk.
Right.
Only to replace it, though.
Yeah.
Not to put a new.
And, and that's correct. And so this is kind of a further extension of that type of thing. This is a new, a new order. Any, any other comments for the committee? Would it be okay with all of you if we come back with a few changes to this, some recommendations, and we discuss this at the next, at our next meeting? And if we are so amenable to those then, and then we, we put that in the form of a recommendation to the council to change the policy? Would it be okay with you?
Sounds good.
Okay. So Steve, if the next time around, if we could, some of the ideas that you've had, some of the ones that you've brought here, if we could kind of push those together, then we will, we'll put it on our next committee meeting.
Yes, sir. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the other says a, on our agenda says consider approval of our 40% lot coverage. But actually, this goes before the planning and zoning, correct?
Yes, sir. If, if this committee wants to assign it to P and Z, we can certainly bring it forward to them.
We, we brought this up at a previous meeting where we discussed this. I hope you've had a chance to think about that. There was some examples that were placed. There's some examples that, that you saw in your packets, too, with regard to how this would fit. And by changing the lot coverage limitation for residential uses, it actually will allow larger facility to be built on, on a lot in one particular case we've seen. And Steve, if you'd like to kind of go over that and just give us a brief overview of that one more time?
Yes, sir. One of our local developers made this recommendation to me, and he's here to nod if he, if he decides he wants to address the committee. But basically, after our discussion, we talked about the limitation being at 40%. That applies to the main dwelling, main dwelling only, not accessory structures. But what this person mentioned to me was that it, it cuts into his profitability if he can only use a certain percentage of his lot. We did discuss, you know, if we do too much impervious drainage, then it could affect the detention requirements, especially on a subdivision-type build. So that was something that we, we discussed, and we mentioned, well, we already have the setbacks of, for our 2.5, for example, it's 15 front, 15 on the rear, and then five on the sides. If you stay within that setback, would that be, would that be acceptable? And the, and this person thought that was maybe a good approach. And so from that discussion, I wanted to maybe do a little more research. And what I found was that a lot of our residential zoning districts, the 40% actually meets the setbacks that are defined by ordinance. So it's, it's already there in some instances. But then there are quite a few others. Take the first one, for example, RE, that's a large lot, 37,500 square feet. The setback limits you to 18,000 square feet, but the 40% would drop you down to 15,000 square feet. Now, we don't really see 15,000 square foot footprints in, in this city. But in some of the other, other situations, it could be a little restrictive on what they're trying to accomplish on, on the build. I was given an example for our 2.5 lot, 50 by 100, that's 5,000 square feet. The buildable area with, with the 1,500 square foot house, the back porch being 100 square feet, the garage being 450 square feet, totals 2,050 square feet. On a 5,000 lot, that bill would exceed that 40% limitation. And so that's a real-life example of a lot that he's looking at in a development that he's proposing. And in this case, I think he would have multiple lots that don't meet that 40%. Now, we have a mechanism in place already that can allow you to get a variance through the Board of Adjustment for that limitation. But in a case where there are multiple lots that have to have consideration for a variance, maybe the best approach would be another mechanism we have, and that's a planned development. I've also thought about wanting, using that example that was provided to me, if you took that same lot and you made it a 50 by 150 lot, so a bigger lot, and these, the developer in this case was using a 50 by 100, if, and just for example purposes, the, the limitation can, can become somewhat important depending on the circumstances. So if you had a 50 by 150-foot lot, which we don't see many of those either, but just hypothetically, and then you take the setbacks into consideration, that gives you 4,800 square feet that could be utilized on that, that's, that particular lot, a 4,800 square foot footprint with only a 15-foot front and back setback. And so if you can envision that, that would be a lot of house on very little green space. Not that that's necessarily a problem, but then when we get into the engineering aspect of it, we may find that situations like that become more problematic than the actual 40% limitation. So that was just something I wanted to put out there for, for thought. You know, impervious surface and detention would be my two, two hesitations on doing anything. But I don't think it's a bad suggestion, because right now, finding a way to build affordable homes as quickly as possible and, and allow these local or any developer to be profitable so that they'll do more in our city, I think is a good idea, of course. So tough decision, but I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Steve? We discussed this before. If we, if this committee would approve this, it goes to planning and zoning for them to conduct hearings and for them to consider this before it would come back to the council. And, and the whole idea is the fact of trying to make it more profitable, trying to encourage more of, and this primarily deals with our 2.5 as much as anything else, does it not?
It's my understanding it would apply to all residential zoning districts, but that's, that's really the-
I understand all, but it's going to impact probably our 2.5 as much.
That seems to be a very popular rezone request, yes, sir.
And everything. And so we're talking about the ability to have a little larger house on, on a, on a lot than we presently can, which is kind of the trend that's happening around the country right now.
Yes, sir.
Any comments? Any direction? What's the will of the committee? What would you like to do?
I would think that sending it to P and Z for, to get more input, both from them and the public.
Okay.
See where the, where the experts there guidance.
Going to make that into the form of a motion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the consideration of approval of 40% lot coverage limitation for residential uses to the P and Z committee.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, council.
That concludes our committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Coe. I apologize, my iPad's not working, so we're trying to get this figured out, so I'm not blind up here.
I left my hammer in the pickup.
All right, let's move on to Public Works. Mr. Nix?
Mr. Mayor Protem, thank you. First item on the Public Works agenda is a recommendation to retain the firm of Jacob and Martin to assist the city with the application. And if awarded an accepted professional services agreement for the 2025-2026 Texas Community Development Block Grant Program operated by the TDA, this program will help us with some of the projects that we have been thinking about doing around the city. This one specifically is on West Charlton Street from McElhaney to Clinton. It will include the work that needs to be done along there for curb and gutter retaining walls and lighting and sidewalk along that area to make that more walkable. The intention is eventually to bring that from the Charlton campus to the downtown area. This is a start and a small section of that. The TDBG grant will be, the max is $750,000, and we have agreed, we, the city, have agreed in the application process to provide 112,500. If we receive the max 750, Jacob and Martin's fee will be a not-to-exceed fee of 97,500. If we receive a smaller amount than that in the grant process, then their fee will proportionately diminish as well as the grant fee itself. The staff recommends doing this. It is, it's basically a no risk for the city. We retain them and they make the application. And if, even if it's awarded, we don't have to accept it. The city still has the right to either accept or reject the grant application, the grant funding. I'm not sure why we would want to do that, but we have the option to do that. So this is the first step in that process. We went through the RFQ and looked at the qualifications, and based on the criteria, they, Jacob and Martin, was selected to be the firm to represent the city on this. Questions?
Yes, sir. Is this a fee-for-service, so if we are not awarded, we don't owe them anything?
Correct. If the grant is not awarded, we don't owe them anything. Any other questions or comments? If not, would there be a motion?
So move that we approve?
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next, when we go to the council with this, there will be a resolution that follows this that we will pass at that time at the council level to retain them. Next item on our agenda is also a TDBG grant. It is for downtown revitalization. This is a completely different grant. It's for work in the downtown area. It encompasses sidewalk, street, street drainage, and water sewer improvements in the downtown area. We will, after review of the RFQs for this, we will bring back a recommendation to the council on which firm to retain. At this point, the committee doesn't need to take action on it. We will have a resolution for the council. If the committee believes that this is worthwhile pursuing, then we will take the council a resolution authorizing staff to proceed with this. It again is a grant that will be funded from the Texas Department of Agriculture. The max award is a million dollars. The minimum match is 2%, but if you max at a 5% grant, which is $50,000, that improves the scoring for the grant. I don't know a lot about the grant process, but I know the higher you score, the better likelihood you get of receiving the grant. This is also the same scenario as the other one. If the grant award is less, their fee would be less. If, if we don't accept, I mean, if we don't receive the grant or don't accept the grant, we would be out no fee to them also.
It'll go similar to the way the other one, I think there were four or five different firms that were interested.
Yes, and, and we'll look at-
We anticipate the same type of thing.
We'll, we'll review the RFQ, we'll review their RFQ and, and select a firm from them. And I'll bring that back probably at the next committee meeting.
Mr. Chair, what are you looking for here? A kind of a direction for us to go?
A consensus from the committee that they're, they believe we need to pursue this. And then when it comes to the council, I'll offer the resolution that authorizes staff to proceed with that, if the committee's in favor of doing this.
I, for one, think that we'd be crazy enough to look at it, because this is, this, we're, we're talking about dollars that taxpayers don't have to come up with locally.
Correct.
And there's, there's no, no blowback for the council or the city on this. Either we get it or we don't get it. And, and then if we do, then we'll, we will have to commit some of the money. But compared to a million dollars and us having to put up 50,000, that's not too bad.
It's a pretty good rate of return.
Good rate, good return.
If the committee agrees with that, then I'll bring that resolution back to the council at the appropriate time.
I, for one, certainly do.
Okay. All right. Last item on the Public Works is an agreement with In situ Form Technologies to construct a stormwater drainage improvement from between Riverside Drive, between Riverside Drive and South Graham. When we came through that area with the east side sewer easement, the city agreed to improve the drainage in order to acquire the easement to go through that property that was owned, that is owned by a citizen of Stevensville. The Riverside Drainage Improvement Project would serve not only his property to make it more developable, but it would also alleviate some of the drainage problems that we have in that area. There's a map that's included with this that shows the, the drainage area, and the proposal from In situ Form is also included. Part of this will be a 36-inch storm drain that's in ground. It runs parallel with the east side sewer. Part of it will be above ground in an existing drainage area, but all of that will be improved and contoured to make that drainage more efficient in that area. In the 24-25 budget, we allocated $425,000 for this. Mr. Williams was able to come up with a bid for this process for $406,349. So it actually came in a little below what we had anticipated and a little below what we had budgeted for it. The 90-day calen, 90 calendar days to complete the project once it's authorized and begun, and staff recommends approval of this also. Questions or comments?
Thank you, Nick, for coming in under budget again.
He does that quite frequently.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's a good evaluation, I think.
Good job.
Does the committee, now this will have to go back to council for, for approval, and does the committee have a, a feeling on this? And I need a motion in a second if you want to approve this and send it to council with a positive recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we send the proposal for the Riverside Drainage Improvement Project to council for approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries those will, all three of those items will go to the council with a positive recommendation then. And that's the end of my committee meeting. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, sir. Next up, finance committee, and that's me. So first on the agenda, authorize city manager to negotiate energy contract for a beginning term date January one, two thousand twenty-six. Mr. King, are you going to take that for me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, uh, you may not know this, uh, so we pay our electric bills for the city based on a contract. Uh, the last contract that was done and approved by this body was in twenty fifteen. And that contract actually went into effect in twenty twenty and was supposed to carry us through twenty thirty. It was a ten-year contract that was done five years in advance. So you can imagine how the debate might have gone back in twenty fifteen when you were talking about electric rates fourteen, fifteen years in the future. Uh, as it turns out, that'll probably go down as one of the best contracts we've ever had. So we currently pay point oh four four nine per kilowatt hour. Uh, we have been working with TASB, uh, Texas Association of School Boards. Uh, they have a big energy sector that works in the market and helps you work with contracts. As of last Tuesday, depending on the length of term of a contract, remember we're point oh four four. The rates in the market were point oh six three to point oh six six, uh, is where they're at today. The reason that necessitates us starting this discussion is what that would tell you is if those are the market rates, but we're only paying oh four four, somebody is subsidizing our electric bill every month and pretty much has been since the backside of winter storm Yuri, when the electric markets changed. In fact, the company that the council initially signed the contract with, uh, doesn't exist anymore. Uh, it was with MP2 Energy and then that was bought out by Shell. Uh, Shell has exercised a clause in the contract, uh, that said, we're not going to go to twenty thirty. We're not going to keep doing this. Uh, and so they're calling it quits at the end of the year, so we've got to do something different. And clearly, we're not going to get the same kind of deal that we got back in twenty fifteen. So working with TASB, the recommendation is she's saying, hey, let's not pick a, a rate today. This runs a little bit of a roller coaster depending on what comes out in the new cycle, those kind of things. So her recommendation to us was to seek authorization, uh, for me to be able to execute a contract when, over the next few months, working with her, we, we feel like we can find, uh, a good spot. They're, they offer terms anywhere from twelve months all the way to ninety-six. I would not, right now, in this market, I really wouldn't recommend going past sixty, a five-year term, unless we just really found a deep valley in there. Uh, but I'm probably gonna, would want to look in that sixty range, uh, to find the right kind of rate. So that's what we're asking for.
Any questions for Mr. King?
You're just looking for a recommendation?
I'll need a, uh, a recommendation from the committee to council if you're so inclined to authorize me to work with TASB and then execute a contract.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, uh, that we approve, uh, the city manager, uh, recommend to the council, the city manager, negotiate a new contract. In the five-year range or thereabouts. If you can get it for twenty years, you know, four percent, that can be better, but.
Uh, motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That will move on to council for, uh, full approval. Uh, next up, consider approval to commit to purchase new fire engine, Chief Hesel.
Mayor Pro Tem and council, tonight we're seeking approval to commit to purchase a new fire engine. Uh, that is due to the lag time and lead time it takes to build a new fire engine today. Uh, it's thirty-six to forty-eight months, we're being told. Uh, for a variety of reasons, all due to some sort of supply chain issue, whether it's, uh, critical components or workforce, that sort of thing. But, uh, industry-wide across all the fire manufacturers are looking at a thirty-six plus month lead time. With that, our engine one is nine years old and should be moving into a reserve status around the ten-year-old birthday. Our reserve engine, uh, is thirteen years old. And we would generally recommend, uh, getting rid of that at the fifteen-year-old birthday. But we also take into account other factors and that's the, the health of our fleet. How much it's costing us to keep those trucks on the road. I can tell you in the last three years, our maintenance budget has been just escalating year after year. And, uh, it's had, it's had some pretty significant impacts on our budget. We work really closely with Ms. Harrison Finance to, uh, contain that within our budget as much as possible. With that said, uh, I would recommend that we commit to purchase and that is we let the ma, fire truck manufacturer know that we intend to purchase, we commit to purchase. Uh, they will not hold us any penalties if we do not purchase it at the end of that three, four-year term when it's built. Because there's such a demand for fire engines right now that they know it'll sell without. So we commit to purchase and then I'll be coming back to you with some additional moves to try to help improve our, our fleet, which would be, I would like to, uh, sell three of our apparatus, our reserve engine. We've got an older brush truck and we've got a squad that I would like to get rid of. And what we're being told is that we believe that the revenues that they would generate would be enough to cover purchasing a small mini pumper or a quick attack, kind of a squad, almost like a Johnny and Roy looking, uh, squad, but with water squirting capabilities. Uh, that unit could take the place of the community resource parabetic vehicle. Uh, it will also serve as a backup grass rig and can actually serve in short periods as a reserve engine, in place of an engine. It would cons, bring down our fleet some, help constrain some of our maintenance costs and, uh, also take us forward into a different deployment model. I'd be happy, happy to answer any questions. I know that's a lot to throw on you, but, uh, the proposed cost of that fire engine with the, uh, with the Bible or discount, and I apologize that, that there's a misprint on the, the staff report. It's actually one point one six three, seven six three is the Bible word price on that, uh, that engine.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
What, in your estimation, I don't, I'm not going to hold you to this dollar amount.
Sure.
But what's the annual maintenance cost correct currently? What do, what do we pay in for maintenance on the, uh, current trucks that we have?
So on the old reserve, uh, we paid last year just over eleven thousand. That's in our old reserve engine. This year, we're at sixteen thousand so far on it. Uh, engine one, uh, the one that I would recommend replacing and then pushing it into reserve. Uh, two years ago, we paid eighteen thousand. Last year, it was around thirteen thousand. So far this year, we're at a twelve thousand, so we're poised to have a high year on the maintenance of that frontline engine. Uh, our truck, it's running anywhere from ten to sixteen thousand. This year so far, we're at ten thousand in maintenance on the truck. We, we're budgeted at fifty thousand in our, our fire maintenance line. We're at fifty-six so far this year.
Sure.
And so, again, sir.
What was the cost of it?
Of the fire engine?
Yes.
It's one point one six three, seven six three.
On the vehicles that you plan on selling, the reserve and the, the brush truck, I guess, uh, what do you think the values of those?
We're being told somewhere in the two hundred thousand dollar range.
For total, for all of them that we would retire? Okay. Any other questions for Chief Hesel?
My first question.
Of course.
Um, so the new truck, does it come completely outfitted or there's then we have to spend more for everything to go with it?
We'll, we'll be able to move some of our equipment over. Uh, that, I believe that price includes some equipment that comes with it. Usually, we end up putting some more on there, but that's budgeted. We budget that separately in small tools.
Any other questions for Chief Hesel?
You may answer this. When was the last time we purchased the engine? Nine years ago?
Uh, so that engine was purchased nine years ago, but since then, we bought the ladder truck. The ladder truck was bought in nineteen.
Any other questions? It's a pleasure of the committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve to, uh, commit to purchase a new fire.
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that will move on to council with a positive recommendation. Thank you, Chief Hesel. All right, next item on the agenda, consider approval of tree removal of Clark Regional Airport by Jim's Tree Service. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, council, um, staff is recommending that the city, um, have Jim's Tree Service remove the trees at the end of runway thirty-two at Stevensville Clark Regional Airport. Uh, some of the background is, is, you know, these rows of trees at the end of that runway are, are sight and height hazard, um, uh, for arriving and departing of the aircraft. And so it also inhibits approaches, uh, to the runway at night in inclement weather. And the Federal Aviation Administration has also identified two additional trees there that need to be removed that are also a hazard. And the trees will have to be cleared, uh, for, before the runway, uh, extension project, so we can get that done. So we're bringing this in front of you today to, um, to ask for your approval of that and, uh, uh, for that project to take place with Jim's Tree Service out at the airport.
Am I reading this correctly, that ninety percent of the funds will be reimbursed from Texas?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right, is there any, any way we won't get, uh, I mean, is there any qualifiers there that would deter us from actually getting that, uh, ninety percent refund?
No, sir, because we ask for approval before we jump off into that from them.
That's what I like to hear, Mr. Brown, that's what I like to hear.
So.
Um, and this would, um, I mean, we have to have this to extend the runway.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And, and we took this up to bid.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions for Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, I, I.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown, I, I want to make sure I understand this. This is for removal of all the trees that the FAA has deemed necessary to remove, correct?
Yes, sir.
It's not just for those two?
No, sir. No, sir.
It's for the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. I thought that was correct.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Screen office, your expertise here, you good?
Mr., uh, it's been needing to be done for a long time. Those trees have, uh, kept us from being able to use some of the equipment out there for several years and we just hadn't been able to take them out. But it's time to get them done, so I, uh, move that we approve tree removal at Clark Regional Airport by Jim's Tree Service.
Second.
All right, motion, got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? That will move on to council for, with a positive recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, next is going to be consider approval of fee schedule for Cross Timbers Legacy Center. Mr. Russell, I have all the directors today. This is amazing. Nick, you want to come up too?
He gave me his proxy, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
You should have a copy in your packet of, uh, the proposed pricing for the Legacy Center. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the pricing and how y'all want to proceed with that.
What's the interest been so far?
Uh, entry, we get calls every, every week on it, several calls a week, sometimes two or three calls a day. So, um, we've, we've held a few people off on some things pending pricing. So, but, uh, some of this pricing was done based on, um, people who wanted to have events there and what they thought was maybe a manageable price. So Ms. Durfee had an event there this weekend. Um, we had the Cross Timbers Fine Arts Gala there. Um, we, we've had our daddy-daughter dances there, stuff like that. So our cleaning fees were based on the daddy-daughter dance and the Cross Timbers Fine Arts Gala. That's why you see two different cleaning fees on there. Daddy-daughter dance was a little easier to clean up after. The full day event with the gala and more people was a little, little more costly to clean up after. And we've outsourced that to a third party. So, but we, we came up with what we feel like is a pretty reasonable amount for, for what the facility is and what it has to offer. So we feel pretty good about the pricing. I don't know how you felt about it. I didn't have to write that check, so.
I had to sit here thinking, um, was that what's the bad on a cleaning fee?
You were not. That was my, I, I cleaned it that weekend, so.
We didn't leave it a mess.
No, it was good.
It was good. It was, it, every single person that walked in the door that hadn't already been there commented on what a beautiful facility it was and how, how easy it was to get to and it was just.
That we did, we do have upcoming events that have already booked there. We've booked a few of them based on this pricing. Um, there's a birthday party coming up there. And she, she booked it for the full day and didn't have any problem with the pricing for the full day and, and the cleaning fee and all that kind of stuff. And so we've got a wedding booked up all the way to November. So, and they didn't have any problem with the full weekend package pricing or anything like that. So, um, we haven't had any negative feedback on the pricing, but I'm open to suggestions if there's anything you want to see changed.
This is comparable though, there.
We looked at some other cities for different stuff. We really tried to start gauging how many hours people were wanting it for events, so like a baby shower or a birthday party, or we've got a wedding that's, you know, they're wanting in on a Friday night. They're probably not going to want to clean up Saturday after, so we're giving them until noon on Sunday. That's where that pricing came in. So we looked at some other places. It's hard to gauge. Um, the square footages are all different. They all vary in what you get. Some places are renting you just a portion of a building. We didn't really feel like that was appropriate with this building because there's not a way to have multiple rentals going on at the same time without really kind of being over the top of each other. So we felt like the pricing was pretty good based on what we saw in the market.
I, sorry.
What?
I think your weekend package should probably be more than that. We had this, Darren and I had this discussion before. Having just paid for a wedding myself, I, I think that this wedding package is, is a little bit low, but it, I haven't done the research that you have.
So we, and you did your wedding at another local establishment here and we looked at, when we did the Cross Timbers Fine Arts Gala, that was kind of a test for us. Um, we have a two hundred person occupancy max and so we thought maybe we could see two hundred in there. After working with Cross Timbers on that particular event, we really think we had to shrink that back down to about a hundred and sixty-five total. So we kind of shrunk the price a little bit because there, unless you're doing a speaking event for two hundred people, you're not going to get two hundred people in there. So for a speaking event, we might could do that, but you're going to have to limit the capacity based on your table setups and stuff like that. So we may not be able to hold what you held at the, at the event center you were at. And so we kind of scaled it back a little bit and the cleaning fee was more than we thought it would be too. So we added the cleaning fee back in, so that pushes it to twenty-one hundred. Uh, we're open to.
That's still very, very reasonable.
Yeah, I think it's extremely reasonable if you compare it to the, the centers that you're used to here on the outskirts of town. Some of those are anywhere from four, five, six thousand dollars for the weekend and some of that's just for the day. So, but because we are a public facility and, you know, we thought it was, we want to get people in there. We want people to utilize this facility. We want citizens to use it, so we wanted to maintain reasonable pricing.
Any other questions for Mr. Russell?
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend this, uh, Legacy Center pricing fee schedule to, uh, to the council.
Second.
Motion is made in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That will move on to council with a positive recommendation as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that will complete the finance committee meeting, and it is 5:20, and I'm going to adjourn from the council committee meetings. We're going to take about a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 5:30 for regular council meeting. Thank you very much.
Sir.
All right. We're going to have Mr. Christie Barnes come up and give the invocation. I'm sorry, Christie, what, who are you with?
Timber Ridge Church.
Timber Ridge, thank you very much.
Heavenly Father, I just want to lift up this city council meeting, God, and I know that we have an agenda, Lord, but God, I just pray that you would be with each of our leaders, God, and each of the things on that agenda, God, and go on before us in every way, lead and guide and bless those who are making decisions for our city, God. And I pray, Lord, that we would just acknowledge, God, that you're in control, Lord, that you are good when life is hard. And so, we lift up this meeting, we lift up our leaders, and we ask a blessing and a covering over Steenfield, surrounding areas in our county. Thank you for the many blessings, God, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. All right, first up, we're going to have a presentation from Chief Harris.
Mr. Mayor Protam and distinguished members of the city council. Mr. Steve Killen and I would like to present a couple of certificates of appreciation for two of our community members and one who couldn't be here tonight. So, during our recent cold spell, Mr. Killen and I were faced with the possibility of having to relocate over 200 residents from, I mean, we didn't even have an exact number, from one of our local apartment complexes who lost heat. And this is when we were in the teens to single digits that we're going to be there. And so, as we have done in all of our cold spells and as we continue to do, these three individuals, we'll make a quick phone call to them, and they open their churches, they open their businesses, and they don't want anything in return. They didn't even want this thank you here tonight, which is just a very small token of what we wanted to give them. And so, read just a little bit of what we have on the certificates for them and then ask them to come up and if we could take a picture with them. So, on behalf of the City of Steenfield, we want to express our sincere gratitude for your support during the recent cold weather event, your quick response instead of making up a warming center, operating your facilities to those without heat was remarkable. Your actions reflect the spirit of our community and what makes Steenfield a great place to call home. So, a small token, thank you for your kindness and compassion. Pastor David Bearden from Graham Street Church of Christ and Mr. B.W. Stevens from Purple Goat City Hall, Steenfield, will you join us? Pastor Ed Diffrich couldn't be here tonight, but he was the first.
Just, and again, over the clapping, just in case Pastor Ed Diffrich couldn't be here with us tonight, but all three of these gentlemen, please step in.
Could I, could I address just a couple of thank yous?
Yeah, absolutely.
This is only possible through collaboration with others. For example, the three food pantries of Grace Place, Basic Needs, and Hope, they had, they had everything lined up to be able to give people clothing, to give blankets, that sort of thing to anyone that would show up. We had people prepared with food that were ready to jump in and do that for us. Back when we had that terrible ice storm, your guys just kept coming by and making sure everybody was okay, you know? That's part of, the fire department did that for us, you know? They would check to make sure the people were safe. You know, we had homelessness help, which is a homeless coalition we have in town, that gave us money to buy cots. So, you can't do this without the help of the whole community. And so, thank you for this, but it's really not, it's not us, it's all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First off, I want to say in 1994, I didn't think I'd ever see BW up here with a couple preachers, but that's awesome. All right, we're going to move on to citizens discussion. We have three tonight. I'm going to actually start off with Mr. Little Say. Michael?
That is actually for, you know, intended on.
Okay, I'll move that on. All right, we'll start off with Officer Bridges. Mr. Bridges, Officer Bridges, you have three minutes. Do not give your home address.
I'm not going to. Thank you so much. Again, my name is Hayden Bridges. I'm the vice president of our Steenfield Police Association. The reason that I'm here today is to advocate for salary improvement for Steenfield police officers. This is a conversation that's gone on for years, longer than I have been aware of salary improvement as I grew up here. The reason that I'm here today is, a year ago, this was a big conversation that we were having about how far behind Steamville Police Department had gotten behind other agencies and the compensation their officers were receiving. We discussed that we needed to be, we needed to find an increase of about 30% in order to be truly competitive with other agencies, to have the best officers and to retain the ones that we have. For obvious reasons, that was not possible in one go. We understood that. A solution was found to try to take that first bite out of the apple. I believe it was last March, we were provided with a raise. The amount of that raise ranged from 6.7% to 3.61%, which is what was described to us as, you know, that first bite out of the apple or a show of good faith of things that were to come. And in that year since, we were given that 6.7 to 3.61, we've watched that gap widen again. Right now, our starting pay is below that of Eret County Sheriff's Office, so whenever you look at, do you want to start your career at Steenfield or Eret County, somebody would see Eret County Sheriff's Office is going to be paid more. And we're also behind Dublin Police Department's starting pay. And then, to compare to other places in the area, an officer with about four months' experience at Granbury completing their field training program is now starting at $73,303, whereas a Steenfield police officer with 10 years' experience is at $72,561. So, do you want to work for 10 years to reach that number, or do you want to work for four months and be ahead of that number? I'm just here to kind of ignite that conversation again of, we need to take another bite out of that apple, we need to keep making progress to be competitive with places like Granbury, places like Weatherford that are seeing that growth. I know there's not a lot of easy solutions. You know, we've heard for years that there's no money or there is no solution, and I know previous people in your position have kind of kicked the can down the road and didn't want to fix it. But unfortunately, the can has ended up at your feet. I just want to plead with you guys that you would be the council and the administration that finds that solution that is able to finally fix this issue so that we can keep our officers and so that we can recruit nothing but the very best. Our officers deserve it, and our community deserves it. We all want to work here, we all want to stay here, we want to raise our families here, and we want to be in this community, okay? That's all I got for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Bridges.
Thank you.
Next, Officer Stone.
So, I too will not be giving my home address.
Please, Stone.
So, my name is Colby Stone. I work as the county officer for the Steamville Police Department. I'm also the president of the police association. Similar to Vice President Bridges, the reason I speak is to advocate for our officers and, not just our officers, but all employees of the Steamville Police Department, as each of us play an integral role in the safety of this community, okay? I was born and raised in Steenfield, been a part of this community my entire life, but I've also been fortunate enough to be a part of this department the entirety of my life. My father served.
Mr. Reese, if you'll lead us in the pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Sir, we're gonna have Mr. Christie Barnes come up and give the invocation. I'm sorry, Chrissy, what, who are you with?
Timber Ridge Church.
Timber Ridge, thank you very much.
Heavenly Father, I just want to lift up this city council meeting, God, and I know that we have an agenda, Lord, but, God, I just pray that you would be with each of our leaders, God, and each of the things on that agenda, God, and go on before us in every way, lead and guide and bless those who are making decisions for our city, God, and I pray, Lord, that we would just acknowledge, God, that you're in control, Lord, that you are good when life is hard, and so we lift up this meeting, we lift up our leaders, and we ask a blessing and a covering over Stephenville, surrounding areas, and our county. Thank you for the many blessings, God, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. All right, first up, we're gonna have a presentation from Chief Harris.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and distinguished members of the city council, Mr. Steve Killen and I would like to present a couple of certificates of appreciation for two of our community members and one who couldn't be here tonight. So during our recent cold spell, Mr. Killen and I were faced with the possibility of having to relocate over 200 residents from, I mean, we didn't even have an exact number, from one of our local apartment complexes who lost heat, and this is when we were in the teens to single digits that we're gonna be there. And so as we have done in all of our cold spells and as we continue to do, these three individuals, we'll make a quick call, phone call to them, and they open their churches, they open their businesses, and they don't want anything in return, they didn't even want this thank you here tonight, which is just a very small token of what we wanted to give them, and so read just a little bit of what we have on the certificates for them and then ask them to come up and we could take a picture with them. So on behalf of the city of Stephenville, we want to express our sincere gratitude for your support during the recent cold weather event, your quick response instead of making up a warning, warming center, operating your facilities to those without heat was remarkable. Your actions reflect the spirit of our community and what makes Stephenville a great place to call home. So a small token, thank you for your kindness and compassion. Pastor David Bearden from Graham Street Church of Christ and Mr. B.W. Stevens from Purple Goat City Hall, Seminole, will you join us? Pastor Ed Diffrich couldn't be here tonight, but he is the pastor.
How many years?
Just, and again, over the clapping, just in case Pastor Ed Diffrich couldn't be here with us tonight, but all three of these gentlemen, please step in.
Could I, could I address just a couple of thank yous?
Yeah, absolutely.
This is only possible through collaboration with others. For example, the three food pantries of Grace Place, Basic Needs, and Hope, they had, they had everything lined up to be able to give people clothing, to give blankets, that sort of thing, to anyone that would show up. We had people prepared with food that were ready to jump in and do that for us. Back when we had that terrible ice storm, your, your guys just kept coming by and making sure everybody was okay, you know, that's part of it. The fire department did that for us, you know, they would check to make sure the people were safe. You know, we had, we had homelessness help, which is a homeless coalition we have in town, that gave us money to buy cots. So you can't do this without the help of the whole community. And so thank you for this, but it's really not, it's not us, it's all of us, it's goodness. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
First off, I want to say, in 1994, I didn't think I'd ever see BW up here with a couple preachers, but that's awesome. All right, we're gonna move on to citizens discussion. We have three tonight. I'm gonna actually start off with Mr. Little Say, Akle.
That, that is actually for, you know, intended on.
Okay, I'll move that on. All right, we'll start off with Officer Bridges. Mr. Bridges, Officer Bridges, you have three minutes, do not give your home address.
I'm not going to, thank you so much. Again, my name is Hayden Bridges, I'm the vice president of our Stephenville Police Association. The reason that I'm here today is to advocate for salary improvement for Stephenville police officers. This is a conversation that's gone on for years, longer than I have been aware of salary improvement as I grew up here. The reason that I'm here today is, a year ago, this was a big conversation that we were having about how far behind Stephenville Police Department had gotten behind other agencies and the compensation their officers were receiving. We discussed that we needed to be, we needed to find an increase of about 30% in order to be truly competitive with other agencies, to have the best officers and to retain the ones that we have. For obvious reasons, that was not possible in one go. We understood that. A solution was found to try to take that first bite out of the apple. I believe it was last March, we were provided with a raise. The amount of that raise ranged from 6.7% to 3.61%, which is what was described to us as, you know, that first bite out of the apple or a show of good faith of things that were to come. And in that year since, we were given that 6.7 to 3.61, we've watched that gap widen again. Right now, our starting pay is below that of Eret County Sheriff's Office, so whenever you look at, do you want to start your career at Stephenville or Eret County, somebody would see Eret County Sheriff's Office is gonna be paid more. And we're also behind Dublin Police Department's starting pay, and then to compare to other places in the area, an officer with about four months' experience at Granbury completing their field training program is now starting at $73,303, whereas a Stephenville police officer with 10 years' experience is at $72,561. So do you want to work for 10 years to reach that number, or do you want to work for four months and be ahead of that number? I'm just here to kind of ignite that conversation again of, we need to take another bite out of that apple, we need to keep making progress to be competitive with places like Granbury, places like Weatherford, that are, that are seeing that growth. I know there's not a lot of easy solutions. You know, we've heard for years that there's, there's no money or there is no solution, and I know previous people in your position have kind of kicked the can down the road and didn't want to fix it, but unfortunately, the can has ended up at your feet. I just want to plead with you guys that you would be the, the council and the administration that finds that solution, that is able to finally fix this issue, so that we can keep our officers and so that we can recruit nothing but the very best. Our officers deserve it and our community deserves it. We all want to work here, we all want to stay here, we want to raise our families here, and we want to be in this community, okay? That's all I got for you, thank you.
Thank you, Officer Bridges.
Thank you.
Next, Officer Stone.
So I too will not be giving my home address.
Please, Stone.
So my name's Colby Stone, I work as the county officer for the Stephenville Police Department, I'm also the president of the Police Association. Similar to Vice President Bridges, the reason I speak is, is to advocate for our officers and, not just our officers, but all employees of the Stephenville Police Department, because each of us play an integral role in the safety of this community, okay? I was born and raised in Stephenville, been a part of this community my entire life, but I've also been fortunate enough to be a part of this department the entirety of my life. My father served this community for 36 years, 16 of that being with this department, so I have watched kind of the ins and outs of this community, this department, for the majority of my life. So with that, I've had the unfortunate experience to see the, the negative aspect of how the pay gap has affected this community and this department, okay? So we do sit before you and are requesting that y'all aid us in seeking a resolution, all right? We need a swift and just resolution, okay? This, this has been going on for 20-plus years now, things that my father complained about, I complained about, my colleagues complained about, right? And we are 20 some odd years later down the road, okay? That, that is not attempting to get to that solution swiftly, okay? And unfortunately, due to that timeframe, it, it's put not only every citizen of this community in harm's way, but also each officer, okay? Because it is an uncommon practice that two officers and a sergeant or three officers and a sergeant are responsible for the 44,000 people that are within the city of Stephenville, and that, that is unsafe for all of us, all right? We do not have the manpower, we are constantly calling upon Eret County, Dublin, DPS, all of these people, Tarleton, right, to, to assist us, because we can't, we don't have the personnel, we can't keep the personnel, and even at our max capacity, we're not, we're not staffed enough in order to, to maintain the needs of this community, to adequately keep them safe, okay? And we are far below that right now, I believe we're sitting a 10 officer short right now with several in the academies, several that are out, and we, we need y'all's help, right, in moving towards a swift and just resolution, all right? Because we can't do it ourselves, all right? We, we do not seek any kind of conflict, we are, we are just here advocating for the citizens of this community, because this is, this is the community that raised me. I owe everything to this community, all right? And that's, that's all I have for y'all, unless y'all have anything for me.
Thank you, Officer Stone.
Thanks, sir.
Is there anybody else wanting to speak, general discussion? Moving on to regular agenda items, we'll start off with the Senator approval of a assessment resolution for steering committee of cities served by ATMS, Mr. King.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, if you'll recall, I believe last month or the month before, we did kind of a companion resolution to this for cities that are served by Encore, this is the other side of that for ATMS. And so again, in this particular side, we're joined up with 186 other cities through this organization to help advocate for all of us when ATMS is looking for rate increases, for filing rate cases with the Public Utility Commission, and this has benefited us over the years, just like on the Encore side, trying to help keep those rates, rate growth slower for our citizens and our residents. You'll see there's a resolution that'll need to be passed, and then the invoice, what that works out to, based on our population, is $1,097.30 to be a member, and so we certainly get that value and then some, so we would seek your approval for the resolution.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. King?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd offer a motion to approve Resolution 2025 R-03, authorizing membership in the ATMS City Committee Steering, I mean, ATMS City Steering Committee, and authorizing the payment of the invoice.
Got a motion from Mr. Nix and a second from Mrs. Smith. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes, and Jason, Mr. King, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
All right, next agenda item, order of cancellation of May 3, 2025 general election. Ms. Lockenhour.
Mayor Pro Tem and council, in February, y'all issued an order of election. We only had four incumbents reapply, so at this time, they're all uncontested, so we can issue the cancellation of the election, so we will not have to move forward with that.
Shouldn't be any questions, but are there any questions? It was a pleasure to counsel here.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we order the cancellation of the May 3, 2025 general election.
All right, got the motion from Mr. Greenhall, second, I'm gonna give that to you, Mr. Reese, man. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much. At this time, it's 5:45, I'm gonna recess from the regular city council meeting, and we are going to move into a TERS board meeting.
Yes, I'll start with it.
Okay.
If members of the council will recall, back in December, you approved the creation of TERS number three out on the northwest side of town, kind of off the Forest Road and that area, coming up, I think we included some parcels back on this side of the loop out there as well. And we talked about then at the creation of the TERS, that in a couple months, we would come back and ask you to approve an ordinance that has the financing plan for that district. And so that's where we're at tonight. In this particular iteration of TERS number three, you guys are, are serving as the TERS Board, as well as also the city council members, and so this part is functional, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Pettit here in a second, and then when you're done with the TERS Board and the Board makes a recommendation to council, then you'll go back in the council meeting and take action. So, David?
Mr. Manager, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, thank you so much, members of the Board, forgive me, thank you so much for the opportunity. This is really a, a follow-up and kind of a cleanup item of the discussion that we had and the action that you took on creating the TIF. A TIF requires two components, one is a creation ordinance, which has the boundary, the term, the participation, and then it has a preliminary project and financing plan, how we plan on spending that money. Y'all passed that ordinance on December 3, after it was, we had a public hearing, closed that public hearing, and so I want to just give you a little bit of an overview, if we can go to the next slide. I, I just want to give you just a highlight of, we discussed this before, so I won't belabor it, of tax increment financing, this is your TERS number three, and then discuss the project and financing plan and kind of the next steps. So if we go to the next slide, this is property that has nominal value, and so anything that is built here, there's two ways to create increment, one is through new construction or one through what I call organic growth. You have a house, it grows at 10% a year, the max of the cap, those are new taxes that are above and beyond what the city is currently taking in. The idea of the TIF is to redirect a portion of those improvements, and what the resolution or the ordinance that created the TIF, it puts 60% of the increment from primarily new development into the TIF to pay for public infrastructure to facilitate new development. If we can go to the next slide. As I mentioned, there's two main components, one's the creation ordinance, that's the hard part, that's done, and then we have a preliminary project and financing plan, which we are now here to change that, scratch that out, and call it final project and financing plan. So nothing has changed between that. As I mentioned before, the creation ordinance is the boundary, the term, the TERS Board, the city participation, all that's been set, and the preliminary project and financing plan. By separate ordinance, and it doesn't require a public hearing, we need to adopt this final project and financing plan, and it really serves as the roadmap for how the funds will be spent. And so we're here to present the project and financing plan to the TERS Board and have your recommendation to the city council for final approval by ordinance. Just to talk about the area, I thank the city manager, if we can go to the next slide, please, discuss this area. These boundaries were, worked in conjunction with city staff and us as the consultants on looking what had the greatest opportunity for development. It's about 131 acres along the Northwest Loop and Fray Avenue. The goal is to encourage private development through infrastructure assistance that will yield additional tax revenues. It consists of 131 acres, the base value is January 1 of 2024, because we did it in 2024. We have a 35-year term that will allow us, afford us the most opportunity to capture revenue, to help pay for this infrastructure and create new development, and as I mentioned before, 60% of the city's rate will go towards paying for those public improvements, and the city will retain the other 40%. As far as development projections on the next slide, I think, next slide, sorry. This has a large combination, as you can see, the, the major movers are this, on the, are the single-family, multifamily, and we do have some townhomes and some commercial development, but really, this is focusing on what I have heard over a number of years, which is the need for housing in the city of Stephenville. And so one of those needs is, is a chicken or egg, you know, dilemma. I need the infrastructure in place before I can sell homes, well, I need to sell homes before I can put in the infrastructure or get financing for the infrastructure. The TIF is one of the great mechanisms that can help facilitate that, and it can also be coupled with other tools that are in the toolbox to help facilitate that. But we anticipate over a short period of time, between now and 2032, about $191 million of new investment, and that's taxable value investment, that's not what's actually spent, that's what shows up on the tax rolls coming to the city. And if we go to the next slide, I know that we're looking at putting 60% of this towards public improvements, but if you can look at the total revenue generated of $46 million, you're looking at participation of $27 million, so net benefit is $18 million, but we're achieving that goal of bringing housing to Stephenville that has been such a priority for so many years, and I think we're making some great strides in putting this district primarily in place and looking at some other tools and working with the developers to make this happen. So obviously, the benefits outweigh the cost, I always like to say, you know, 40% of something's better than 100% of nothing, but we still want to make sure that we're judicious and that we have enough money to pay for our existing and new city services. If we can go to the next slide, what we try to do with that $27 million, that's just a number right now, we know, we want to be responsive to the market, they're gonna need roads, water, sewer, infrastructure that's in place, and what we recommend is a reimbursement approach. You front it, and then once this fund captures that through taxable value, we will reimburse you for that. And so that helps them get over the financial hurdle, that we're seeing a lot of single-family developers, not just the one-off, but the larger developers that can come in and do hundreds of lots, they're finding that big significant, because it requires equity in order to put that infrastructure, in order to sell that. And so this, they'll be putting in there, that they'll have, at least on paper, the ability to repay that and also get those homes on the ground. So this is a menu, by no means is it definitive, it basically lists everything that's within the statute. Any disbursement from the fund will require your approval and the city council's approval. As a client of mine likes to say, there's gonna be two Mother May Eyes, so anytime that we take a dollar out of this TIF, we're gonna have to ask the TIF Board, or ask the city council for your approval, and there's gonna be some belts and suspenders that go along with it. So if we go to the next slide, what we're asking for your consideration is approval of this final project and financing plan, and then also the, and recommend that to city council for approval of the ordinance. And once we have this in place, then we'll get to work, and I know Jason and I have several meetings lined up in the next couple of weeks, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Pettit?
Let me just say, it was a little windy coming from Fort Worth. I called Jason, I said, I typically give myself an hour and a half, and there was a truck that was turned over, it was blowing so much, so it looked like it was coming through a storm, and we did go through a storm, as we can tell here.
Absolutely. No questions for Mr. Pettit? Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I will recess from the TERS board meeting, and, oh, I need action on this?
Recommendation from the Board.
Okay, I do need recommendation. So what's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we recommend approval of the project and financing plan for TERS number three.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that will move on to council with a positive recommendation. I will now recess from the TERS board meeting and reconvene into the regular city council meeting. And now we will consider approval of ordinance approving a project and financing plan for tax increment reinvestment zone number three, city of Stephenville, Texas, established pursuant to chapter 311 to the Texas Tax Code. Any discussion, questions? It's a pleasure to the council.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we approve Resolution, this ordinance, ordinance 2025-0-06.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Greenhall and a second from Mrs. Durfee. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. All right, Steve, it's your time to shine. Thank you, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, council, a few things before we do not, first is a rezone case for Mr. Scott Allen, representing Stephenville Rentals LLC. It's a rezone for property on Forest Road, the TERS that we just discussed, being parcel 69044 of the Motley William Abstract here in Eret, or Steph, city of Stephenville, Eret County, moving from single-family housing, R1, to R2.5 integrated housing. The question came up earlier, and I see that I don't have the map in the packet for this particular, or for these three cases, but utilities in the area, we do have water extending down Forest, it's a six-inch water main, and then we have a eight-inch sanitary sewer, so do have facilities in the area to serve these properties. Mr. Allen is looking at a rezone to the R2.5, he does intend to use or build bigger lots for this development, but he is considering single-family homes and possibly duplexes for this development, so asking for the R2.5, it does allow for smaller setbacks, and we are looking at a preliminary site plan with Mr. Allen at the moment, and hopefully bringing him before a pre-development meeting with all reviewing departments in the next few weeks. The Planning and Zoning Commission convened on February 19, 2025, and by a vote of six to one, recommended the city council approve the rezone request. We had one person attend the meeting and, and did not really speak in favor or in opposition of the project, just simply had some questions that were discussed and answered during the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, so with that, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd be glad to answer any questions, thank you.
Any questions for Steve?
In the vote before the planning and zoning was six to one?
Six to one, yes, sir.
Any other questions for Steve? Here and none?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go, go right ahead.
When this project originally came before us, wasn't it all going to be single-family? I mean, wasn't that the, or am I just remembering that incorrectly?
You may have it confused with another project off of Forest, this one, to my knowledge, in the five years I've been here, we haven't discussed this particular development.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Here are none, I will now open this up to a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against this project? Here are none, I will now close the public hearing and consider approval of ordinance rezoning property located at zero Forest, being parcel R69044 of the A0515 Motley William Abstract of the city of Stephenville, Eret County, Texas, from single-family R1 to integrated housing, R2.5.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we approve the ordinance number 25-0-07, under case number RC2025-004, say rezoning of this land from R1 to say rezoning of this land from R-one to Harp-two-point-five.
Give me a second. We got a motion from Mr. Cook, a second from Mr. Reesman. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Second case is RZ-two thousand and twenty-five-zero-zero-five. It's a sister property or adjacent property to the one we just mentioned. The distinctions here are this particular parcel is currently zoned R-two, and he's asking for a rezone to R-two-point-five. Same development, same, same, uh, intended, uh, project. So with that, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions on this one?
Was the, uh, results the same with regard to P and Z?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you. It was a vote of six to one recommending, uh, approval by city council.
Any other questions? I will now this up to a public hearing. Anyone here to speak for or against this project? Here are none. I will now cup, close the public hearing, and we will, um, I lost my place, I use my computer. Uh, so you consider approval of ordinance rezoning property located at Zero Forest, Forest being parcel RZ-two-four-five-five of the A-oh-five-one-five Motley William Abstract of the city of Steenville, Eureth County, from one-to-family housing R-two to integrated housing R-two-point-five. It's a pleasure of the council.
Got it?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I make the motion that we approve of the ordinance twenty-five, two-thousand-and-twenty-five dash O dash O seven, the rezone from two-point, uh, R-two to R-two-point-five off Forest Lane. Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Second.
I got the motion from Ms. Smith, a second from Mr. Greenhall. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, sir. Next one is RZ-two thousand and twenty-five-zero-zero-six. Again, Mr. Scott Allen, uh, for parcel R-six-nine-zero-four-zero, uh, same project. This is currently zoned R-two, asking for a rezone to R-two-point-five. Recommendation by Planning and Zoning Commission was a six-to-one vote recommending approval, uh, by the city council. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve on this one? All right, here are none. I will now open this up to public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this project? Seeing none. I will now close the public hearing and consider approval of ordinance rezoning property located at Zero Forest being parcel R-six-nine-zero-four-zero, block one-five-five, lot seventeen, part of the S-two-six-hundred, C addition to the city of Steenville, Eureth County, Texas, from one-to-family housing R-two to integrated housing R-two-point-five.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we approve ordinance number two-zero-two-five dash O dash zero-nine.
A motion from Mr. Greenhall, a second from Ms. Smith. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, sir. Next one is RZ-two thousand and twenty-five-zero-zero-seven. This is applicant Colby Pack representing Solid Ace Holdings LLC, requesting a rezone for property at thirteen-fifty West Cage, which is parcel R-three-three-six-five-nine, block twenty-three, lot B of the Southside Edition, city of Steenville, Eureth County, from R-three, multi-family residential, to R-two-point-five integrated housing. Uh, with this rezone request, he's actually dropping the, uh, potential density of the project, uh, pretty dramatically, uh, from the R-three possibility. Mr. Uh, Pack generally builds, uh, two-to-four family structures, and the reason he is asking for the R-two-point-five rezone is because the R-two-point-five has a smaller setback requirement, fifteen-foot front and rear with a five-foot side setback. This will allow him to push the building, uh, further back on the property and allow for parking in the front and be able to fit the structure on there with, you know, within the, the setbacks and the forty percent limitation. So, uh, with that, be glad to answer any questions. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, the recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission was that the city council approve the rezone request, and that was by a vote of seven to zero.
Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Killen, what are the dimensions of this lot?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't have that in front of me, Mr. Nix, but I can sure get it to you.
It may be on the, on the, uh, slide, but I can't read.
Yes, sir. I apologize. I, I don't have that. I, I believe it absolutely meets the minimum dimensions of fifty by sixty for R-two-point-five, which was what we're rezoning it to. And if not, to your point, we'll have to go to Board of Adjustment and get that corrected. I, I'm sorry, I just don't have it off.
I, I couldn't find that, and I thought I probably had overlooked it, but that, that's significant for that change when you're, when you're looking at an existing lot like that.
Absolutely, and I should have been prepared for that question. I apologize I'm not, so thank you.
Just as a comment, it's, it's, I wouldn't say it's rare, but we don't see it very often, going from an R-three, which is an apartment, uh, zoning, to R-two-point-five, which, uh, is a single-family. And, uh, so it's, uh, and, and a little bit different aesthetic involved in it, as we all know.
Definitely unusual. But Colby's unusual. All right. Any other questions for Steve? Here are none. I will now open this up to a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this project? Seeing none. I will now close the public hearing and consider approval of ordinance rezoning property located at thirteen-fifty West Cage, being parcel R-three-three-six-five-nine, block twenty-three, lot three-B of the S-sixty-two-hundred Southside Edition of the city of Steenville, Eureth County, Texas, from multi-family residential R-three to integrated housing R-two-point-five.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, resolution ordinance, uh, two-zero-two-five dash zero dash ten.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Reesman, a second from Ms. Smith. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Steve. Next, next on the list there.
Yes, sir. This is, uh, for consideration of the approval of, uh, proposed revisions to the B-two zoning district. Uh, you might recall, we've had several discussions, uh, regard, uh, about this particular topic since, uh, this past summer. On January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, the Development Services Committee, uh, asked that staff bring back some recommendations, um, for consideration and assign this to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing. And so we, uh, I apologize, we had brought recommendations for the proposed revisions at the June, or January twenty-first meeting, then went for a public hearing, uh, before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, met on the, on February nineteenth, and by a vote of seven to zero, recommended the, I'm sorry, that's a five-to-two vote, trying to go on memory here, five-to-two vote, recommended that the city council approve the proposed revisions. And so just to kind of give you a quick summary of what these, uh, revisions entail, uh, the, what we were looking at is conditional use that would allow for paint and body shops in the B-two district. And when we looked at the B-two, uh, the B-two permitted uses do not allow for paint and body shops, but through this action, it would allow a paint and body shop in a B-two retail commercial district to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council to ask for a conditional use permit. And if the conditional use permit is approved, then they will, uh, be a conditional use authorized by, uh, ordinance, and that conditional use would apply to the property. If the property sold and a new, uh, new project came in or a new business came in, then that conditional use permit would have to be honored. If the business that goes into the, uh, after, or into the property has a conditional use permit and then relocates in the city, that does not mean that the conditional use permit travels with the, the, uh, person that obtained the conditional permit, so conditional use permit. So basically, the ordinance creates two things. It creates a conditional use for retail and commercial zoning to be a paint and body shop, which doesn't exist currently, only exists in the industrial district. But it also expands the definition of the conditional use, which is section one-fifty-four-oh-three, and a conditional use before basically just said that the city, or Planning and Zoning Commission, city council, can authorize a conditional use if the business or the use meets the requirements of that particular zoning district. That's all it said. So we looked at other cities and found, uh, a model and drafted a model, and basically what we did was, uh, put some language in there that is not a, not limited, uh, by the language presented. It's not an all-inclusive list, but it just provides some, some examples of what, uh, both bodies could recommend, uh, for the conditional use permit to be considered and approved. It also gives, um, businesses that are wanting to pursue this conditional use some parameters that they can look at, and, and maybe they can come to the city with some concessions or some things that they are willing to do in order to make that business fit in well with the community. When we think about our comprehensive plan moving forward, the comprehensive plan starts to remove some of those boxes that we currently have ourselves in with the current land use regulations, which we are, uh, exploring that right now, and it becomes more of an inclusive-type, uh, zoning based on, does the business fit well with the neighboring properties in the area? And so with the comprehensive plan, this conditional use would fairly fall in line, uh, with what we're eventually wanting to do with that Plan two-thousand and fifty. One last point I want to make is that we currently have industrial zoning that allows for paint and body shops and B-two zoning that does not. Many times, those can be directly across the street from one another, in some cases, directly next door to one another. And one can have it and one can't, even though they may be adjacent properties. So with that, sir, be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Steve, are we still talking about across from the new football stadium, that area right there?
Obviously, that's the catalyst of this discussion, but this will apply to every B-two zoned property across the city.
Pretty much the catalyst of what we've talked about.
Counsel, let me be clear, tonight, you are only considering changes to this definition in the ordinance and changes of the allowance of a conditional use of that particular use in B-two, not a specific instance or a specific case.
Good. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I, I understand what Mr. King says, and he's absolutely correct, but we've been chasing this rabbit for some time for a specific parcel of property. That's the only reason it's here again, uh, and I, I think that we need to be more cautious with our zoning. I, I'm, I'm going to go on record as saying our comprehensive plan has got some flaws in it, some serious flaws. This is one of those things that takes away some of the protections from certain property owners, from other property owners that may be adjacent to or across the street from. And I don't think that it's in the best interest of our zoning and the best interest of our city to, to start allowing uses like this in any of the B-two areas, and specifically this one, because we continue to come back for this specific case, and I think that's the reason that we continue to hear this.
Thank you, Mr. Nix. So with this, with this ordinance, the city council controls that though, correct? I mean, they'll control, you know, what, what is able to be permitted in that, in that area. But can you also, I mean, we have a large, pretho, 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 I can't even talk. We have a large group of, of different businesses that can go in this zoning, correct? I mean, we can be a, it can be a tobacco store, it can be, uh, I mean, it can be a vape shop, it can be a tattoo parlor, it can be so many other things, uh, other.
Auto repair business.
Auto repair business. Uh, the only thing that.
Tire shop.
Yeah, it can be a tire shop as well. Uh, so I mean, we, we do have a lot of, uh, different avenues of businesses that can be, can take place in, in this zoning area. And, and other, the other cities that you've been looking at for, uh, this, this ordinance, I mean, is that something that's allowed in their zoning, uh, compared to ours?
Yes, sir. This, this, um, to answer your original question there, um, this would go before P and Z for a recommendation back to council. Council will make the final decision on if a CUP, conditional use permit, was granted, and it would be based on whatever the business might bring forward or what the council may want to add as additional requirements, uh, for that particular use. Um, and then to answer your question, uh, it is a broad, broad range of uses already in B-two. It's not as broad as what we have in industrial, uh, but if you compare them side by side, uh, very much are very similar uses in the B-two, uh, district. So I think I answered your question. If I missed one, please let me know.
Just to clarify just a little bit, just so that everybody understands, this is, we were talking about here a conditional use permit requirement, uh, in a B-two zone.
Correct.
Uh, this is one of those, uh, areas and, and that, that, uh, the auto paint and body shop repair, uh, would be allowed under a conditional use permit. That conditional use permit is not an automatic right. It is by its very nature, it's conditional use, it has to go before the planning and zoning, and then back to the city council for approval before it would be allowed in there, in that area. So you've still got some, and it can come with restrictions too that are requested as per what other communities have done, as well as what, uh, has been written, written here for us to look at.
Yes, sir. Well stated.
That's well, so, so, that's well, so, so what we're looking at is when there is a, a property that they want to come into, we still bring it back to P and Z and council to make the final decision whether we're going to allow that company to come in.
Yes, sir.
In that area. So it's, it's going to be on an individual basis on each one.
So from a staff perspective, just to maybe address that question, if we had a business come in and we said, okay, you don't meet any of these permitted uses, but you do qualify for a conditional use permit, we would put them on the, uh, P and Z agenda and then subsequently city council agenda for consideration of that CUP, just like we would if we were asking for a rezone. It would, it would be the same process, it'd go into P and Z and then back to city council for a final action.
Even though, even though they make, even though they meet the criteria, we can still turn it down.
Yes, sir. It, it's a separate, it's not a use by right, it's a conditional use granted by, by the, the governing body.
See what I'm saying? Okay. That's, that's what I needed to really understand.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? I do have, uh, someone that's requested to, to speak on this. Jendatam, uh, Mr. How do I pronounce your last name?
It's pronounced Lissy.
Lissy, okay. Now, Mr. Lissy, I do have to tell you that when you, when you are speaking, you're only speaking about the ordinance and not any specific property.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Thank you.
Uh, for the record, Mike Lissy with Ross Architects at twelve-fifty-five West Fifteenth, Plano, Suite one-twenty-five, uh, from here on out. I was just going to reserve the rest of the time to answer any questions anyone may have about these types of facilities. I'm not here to persuade, dissuade, or anything else.
Mr. Lissy, uh, you, no?
No.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions for Steve? It was a pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we, uh, approve ordinance number two-thousand-and-twenty-five dash zero dash eleven, uh, which is an ordinance, uh, amending section one-fifty-four-point-zero-three of the Code of Ordinances to revise the definition of conditional use permits and revise section one-fifty-four-point-zero-six-point-two-point-C by adding number seven, auto paint and body shop repair, providing for an effective date.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Cook, second by Mr. Greenhall. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you, that passes. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate you. All right, moving on, we're gonna, we're gonna pull Development Services Committee, uh, meeting, so we're, we're good with you, Mr. Cook. Uh, Mr. Nix, uh, Public Works Committee, please, sir.
You skipped over a lot there. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Our first item that, that the committee met on is a.
Our first item that, that the committee met on is a recommendation from staff and from the committee to retain Jacob and Martin to assist the city of Steenville in the application and if awarded and accepted professional services agreement of the twenty-five, twenty-six Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. This will be a program for public improvements such as sidewalks, curb and gutter retaining walls and lighting along West Charleston Street from McElhaney to Clinton. I'm, I'm not going to bore y'all with all the details again, but it is a potential seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. We will obligate one hundred twelve thousand five hundred dollars to, as a, as a, are part of the matching funds to go with that. Jacob and Martin's fee would be a, a max of ninety-seven five, not to exceed. If we receive the full grant amount, if we receive less than that, they will cut their fee some. We asked for RFQs and their firm came out at the top of the list for the RFQs for this particular program. If, if we do not receive the grant, they receive no funding. If we do receive the grant, it will be based on how much the grant is for. Their funding will be based on how much the grant is for. The committee recommended to the council unanimously that they approve this expenditure or this obligation of funds and retaining Jacob and Martin to assist the city with that funding. I would make the motion to the council to approve that in the form of resolution. And I may need to ask clarification. Do we need two motions or one for approval of that and the resolution at the same time?
Two.
Two, okay. My first motion will be to accept Jacob and Martin, Inc. to assist the city with the application for that grant. And that's, that, that will be the motion and the recommendation from the committee.
Second.
All right, motion, motion from Mr. Nix, second from Mr. Greenhall. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir.
My next request for the council will be to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R oh four, authorizing the staff to proceed with the process to retain them to make this grant application on our behalf.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Nix, second by Mr. Greenhall. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Next item on my agenda is also a CDBG grant for downtown, this one is for downtown revitalization. Staff recommends support, selection of a qualified consultant to assist with this. The RFQs have been sent out and will be reviewed. At, at a future time, we will bring back a recommendation to the council. This grant is for downtown revitalization, a max amount of one million dollars. The matching amount for the city in this one would be fifty thousand. The fee would be, will be determined once we get the, the award, if we get the award, based on what the amount of that is. This item was recommended by the committee that we forwarded to the council. And since there was no committee action on that, I'm going to ask that council, I'm going to pay, make the motion that council pass resolution twenty twenty-five dash R oh five, authorizing the city to proceed with the retaining firm to proceed with the Texas of Unit, Community Development Block Grant Program for application and administration of that.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Nix and since, may I try next to me? Seconds for Ms. Smith. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Last item on our agenda, Mr. Mayor Protem, was a recommendation from the committee to authorize staff to engage with in situ form technologies to perform stormwater drainage improvements between Riverside Drive and South Graham. This, this stormwater improvement was a part of the agreement that was made with a private property owner to allow us to have an easement across his property for the East Side project. We budgeted four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for this specific project. Mr. Williams was able to come in with a construction cost of four oh six, three forty-nine, which is a savings on what the original budget was for. Staff, I mean, committee recommended with a unanimous recommendation to the council to approve this request. And I will make that in the form of a motion to approve their request to engage with an agreement within situ form to begin the East Side sewer, I mean, the, the stormwater drainage between Riverside and Frye.
Second.
No, not Frye. Graham, I'm sorry.
All right, motions are made by Mr. Nix, second by Mr. Reesman. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. On to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee met about an hour and a half ago to discuss several items. We did have three members present. First item was to authorize the city manager to negotiate an energy contract beginning term date of January one, two thousand twenty-six. The committee did unanimously approve this, three oh. We did make a slight change. I believe we did a five-year term. Go up to a five-year term on that?
You can set whatever limits you'd like. That's kind of, I think, the sweet spot right now looking.
Okay.
So again, just asking to negotiate, authority to negotiate and execute a contract.
Fantastic. Any questions? It was the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we authorize city manager to negotiate energy contract beginning term date January one, two thousand twenty-six.
And execute, correct?
And execute.
Motion's made by Mr. Greenhall, second by Ms. Durfee. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next on the agenda was to consider approval to commit to purchase a new fire engine. Since we just discussed this, I'll just touch on a couple points. This is, this was approved three oh with the committee to bring to the council with positive recommendation. This would be to put the order in for a new fire truck in the amount of one point one six three. There is a three to four-year lead time on this. But we need to go ahead with the, the demand currently. We need to go ahead and put the order in if that is the pleasure of the council. Any questions?
Mayor Protem, I will make a motion to commit a purchase of a new fire engine.
Second.
All right, motions are made by Ms. Reesman, second by Ms. Durfee. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next item was to consider approval of tree removal at Clark Regional Airport by Jim's Tree Service in the amount of fifty-five thousand three hundred. Ninety percent of that cost will be reimbursed through Texod's Aviation Routine Airport Maintenance Program. This is a service that we need to finish our extension of our runway. The committee did approve this, three oh. Any questions from council? It was the pleasure of the council.
Move approval of the contract for fifty-five thousand three hundred with ninety percent of the funds to be reimbursed to the city.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cook, second by Mr. Greenhall. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the last item on my agenda was to consider approval of fee schedule for Cross Timber's Legacy Center. Mr. Trussell presented a fee schedule for anywhere from a half a day, a couple hours to the weekend. After reviewing the fee schedule and discussion from the committee, the committee did recommend, positive recommendation on this, three oh. Any discussion or questions? It's the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I have the motion that we approve the Cross Timbers Legacy Center rental fees schedule as presented.
Second. Motion's made by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Reesman. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That concludes the Finance Committee meeting.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I, I think I made a mistake.
I doubt it.
In the Public Works Committee.
I, you know, I was just taking your word for it. I, I think I, I saw that too.
Okay, apparently I failed to recognize in the resolution that Jacob and Martin had been awarded the contract. And that was, that was two actions, because I asked Mr. Thomas and we took the first action to award that to Jacob and Martin and then passed the resolution. But I, I may have made an error on that and the city secretary and I have been discussing that.
So because it's a grant, I want to just be real careful about how we proceed through there. What we did is I think we made a, an acknowledgement that we had selected Jacob and Martin to perform that work. But what we need to do is actually award the contract to Jacob Martin that's inside.
That was my mistake.
And then, so we, we made the resolution saying, yes, we have selected Jacob and Martin to perform that work. Now we need to award that contract for professional services.
Okay, that, that was my mistake, Mr. Williams. I apologize.
Not a problem at all.
Worst mistake I've made this evening.
Ever.
This evening, anyway.
This is item number twenty-five, just-
Yeah, we're, we're, we're going to back up. I apologize. But this was the, the awarding of the contract to Jacob and Martin for the CDBG grant for the public improvements along West Charleston Street. And I, I will now make the motion to award the contract to Jacob and Martin to assist the city with the application of that project.
Second.
All right, a motion's been made by Mr. Nix and second by Ms. Durfee to award the contract to, I'm sorry.
Jacob and Martin.
Jacob and Martin. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor Protem.
No problem at all. And that would conclude, again, your Public Works Committee?
Again, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, moving on to the financial reports. Ms. Harris?
Mayor Protem, counsel, these are the budget report for our period, period ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, we're four months into our fiscal year. We had received three point five million in property taxes in the month of January, resulting in three hundred and eighty-seven thousand over the funds collected last fiscal year to eight, year to date. The amount collected is ninety-five percent of our seven point eight million budget, and that's about a hundred and fifty-six thousand more than anticipated. For sales tax, we received seven hundred and thirty-five thousand in January. That resulted in thirty-five thousand or one percent less than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. We've collected thirty-five percent of our budget, and that's about twenty-one thousand higher than anticipated. Of the eighteen point three million dollar revenue received to date, sixty-six was percent, was received in our general, general fund, largely due to property tax. Twenty-three percent was received in the water wastewater fund. Three percent was in our landfill fund and three percent was in our stormwater drainage fund. We've received forty-six percent of our total budget of revenue through January. That's about one point two million more than anticipated, and that's due to taxes, licenses, and permits, charges for services, the sale of property of the senior center, and the interest revenue. Old senior center, not to be confused with the legacy center. Don't want anybody to take that the wrong way. We received four hundred and seventeen thousand more revenue through January than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to taxes and our charges for services. Of the thirteen point nine million spent today, fifty-five percent was expended in our general fund. Thirty-seven percent was expended in our water wastewater fund. Three was, three percent was expended in the landfill fund. Three percent was expended in the capital projects fund. We've expended twenty-six percent of our total budgeted reven, budget expenditures through January. It's about five point four million less that we had anticipated. That's due, due to personnel, which is vacancies, some of our contractual, our capital outlay, and then a large part of it is our transfers. We figured we'd do them in January and we postponed them until February. We spent two hundred and ten thousand more on expenditures through January than last fiscal year to date. That's due to personnel and contractual and maintenance. CED is, has received an overall thirty-five percent of their budgeted revenue through January. That's fifteen thousand less than last fiscal year to date and six thousand more than anticipated due to, there are only two sources, taxes and interest revenue. CED has spent an overall twenty-six percent of budgeted expenditures through January, which is a hundred and seventeen thousand more than last fiscal year to date due to personnel, contractual, and capital outlay. And sixty-seven thousand less than anticipated due to capital laying and grant disbursements. Are there any questions?
Any questions from Hocke? Thank you very much. Moving on to the comedy portion of our meeting, Mr. Samper?
I never have anything funny to say, and that's why I keep trying. Howdy. Hope y'all are having a good one. I'll try to be done by mid-speech of the president tonight. Speaking of which, I thought it would be interesting to notice that, or note that today, March fourth, there have actually been thirty-two inaugurations of presidents on March fourth. Interesting, you probably didn't know that. Twenty-six different presidents into some presidential factoids, since we're all going to be just tuned in so heavily. You think right now is a comedy thing. Wait till tonight. And I'm not talking about just the speech. Seventeen ninety-two, George Washington was inaugurated in Congress Hall in Philadelphia. He gave the shortest speech in history at a hundred and thirty-three words. In eighteen ninety-one, William Henry Harrison gave the longest inauguration speech at eight thousand four hundred and forty-three words. I plan to go beyond that. Eighteen oh one, Thomas Jefferson became the first president to be inaugurated in Washington, D.C. And, and this will be of interest. You commented on my vest, so I thought I would say something, because it is American-made. In eighteen oh nine, James Madison became the first president to be inaugurated in American-made clothes. So that means absolutely nothing for this evening. Sorry. In seventeen eighty-nine, on this day, the first U.S. Congress met to declare the Constitution to be in effect. There were nine senators and twelve, or excuse me, thirteen representatives at the time. Non-political news, I'll skip that. I would say on, in nineteen twenty-four, the song "Happy Birthday to You" was published by the, by Clayton Summy Company. And today, conveniently, is my daughter's birthday, so happy birthday to Reagan watching. I understand it's your son's birthday as well. And in March, we also have Mayor Protem David Basket on March twenty-third. He will be sixty-two, and Marion Cole's birthday, sharing my chair, so I had to mark, mark those out, mark those as well. So because of those, I thought that I might say some of the things that we did in the last week, because this is important, so I don't get in trouble. But we met with the Office of the Governor and Economic and Tourism Development in the last few days. We had dinner with the corporate folks at Encore, their economic development side. We served on the statewide workforce development committee, working on just that, workforce development. We met with the Texas Historical Commission for some projects that are going on in our community at this time. We hosted three developers in our new place. We had a career club site visit, or we're having that this week actually. And we received a workforce grant for our career club. We also helped develop some legislative priorities to give to, for the state and worked on their project. They just finished a strategic plan, but economic development-wise, specifically legislative priorities for to maintain and enhance existing economic development tools, some of which suck. And I say that as a, as a very professional term. And so we're trying to increase those to have a better chance for, not only for rural communities, but for economic development organizations like ours as well. We don't tend to use the state very often, but when we do, we want to make sure it, it benefits towns like Steenville. We have the, we protect the economic development sales tax for economic and community development purposes, preserve chapter three eighty and three eighty-one agreements for economic development projects. Obviously, we've had several of those. Maintain funding for existing economic development tools, support workforce development programs. And lastly, enhance infrastructure investments for continued business growth. So we are working on those and had those passed through, or getting those passed through the state during this session. I might add also that we have done sixty projects since I've been back in town of over three hundred million dollars in investment in our community and have only used the state in one of those projects, or two, excuse me, one and a half, two, two projects altogether. Lastly, I will say that we have been, the state has put us in a category with, oh, here it is, with the, they put us in regions throughout the state so they can do various things. We are put into the metroplex region. Little interesting, that's neither good nor bad. It tends to follow a lot of the COGS, the council governments. We're in with nineteen, or we're one of nineteen counties in that area that covers fifteen thousand one hundred square miles. In this area that we are included, eight point two million in population. Our share of the Texas population is about twenty-eight percent overall, and about thirty-one percent, however, of the Texas employment. And so, and that's continuing to grow significantly. We're, in fact, our employment growth is actually growing faster than our population growth, which sounds awkward. It just means that more of our people are getting into the workforce. So we're not really having the issues that a lot of states are having where they're having a tough time finding, well, not that they're having a tough time finding people, they're having a tough time getting people to work. So this is an advantage of our area here. Texas has a two point four trillion dollar economy, which is the eighth largest in the world. It's kind of like a whole other country. We ought to coin that somewhere. And then also, lastly, I think the, as I conclude, just FYI for everybody, don't worry about tariffs, it'll all even out, it'll be fine. And then also, if you are making an argument about the price of eggs, you better not have an eight-dollar cup of coffee in your hand, or you will lose the argument. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Sanford. I will now entertain a motion for the, approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, a motion from Ms. Greenoff, second from Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Opposed? Comments by City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I only have one. Mayor Sabine reached out while we've been here this evening, and he asked me to tell everyone how appreciative he is of everybody's prayers and thoughts and phone calls and text messages and personal visits, and he's working on getting back here real soon, but he said thank you. Fall ahead.
Ms. Durfee?
Well, mine might be as long as Jeff's. Sorry, I got a few things. First off, I just, speaking of the mayor, I'd like to thank the fire department and the paramedics and everyone that took such great care of him and the staff at the hospital that took care of him and got him to Fort Worth. We appreciate that. Second, congratulations to Micah Parsons, a young man here in town that won the Food Network's Kid Baking Challenge. So hopefully, you know, love to have some cookies or something. Saturday, we had our Texas Independence Wheels, Wings, Wheels, and Wonders with sixty-one planes, fifty-one vendors, over two hundred cars, and an estimate of seven hundred plus spectators. We'll have them more accurate with that when we get the data fi, information back. I'd like to invite everybody for the Travis Letter dedication on March sixth here at the courthouse at ten o'clock in the morning to Chief Harris and his department. Thank you so much for, you've been handling some major incidents in the past weeks, months, and we appreciate you keeping us safe and handling those so well. And lastly, if you have a chance to see the new edition of the Pro Rodeo Sports News Magazine, you will see the cover is our beautiful Cowboy Capital Arena. So if you have a chance to pick up one of those and read an article, we greatly appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. King?
Not a whole lot. I, just to piggyback on what Councilman Durfee just said, that event out there at the, at the airport was quite, quite a deal. Probably two hundred cars and sixty-one booths, right, and all those planes that came in. I mean, that was quite, quite a neat thing and quite a nice event. And congratulations to Darrell and, and the Main Street people for, and, and the airport for, and, and all of the staff really for working out there and, and putting on a nice, a nice event that drew a lot of people from out of town to, not just in town. And so that was, that was kind of cool, I thought. Also, a note, I'm a basketball fan, naturally I'm sitting next to the lawn here and, and everything. But, but this week, this coming week, I think, are the two last games to, to be played in Wisdom Gym. The Tarleton Women's Basketball Program, which is an exciting program to watch, and the Tarleton Men's, which is coming along good. I think they're third place or so in the whack-me-out this year, and, or fourth. And, and they're gonna have their last two games each. And I think that's Thursday and Saturday, the coming week, and those will be the last two basketball games in Wisdom Gym, which is kind of a, it's a kind of a change. It's, you know, there's gonna be a whole new venue out there come next year. So I thought that was pretty interesting today. Okay?
Thank you. Ms. Reisman?
Oh, congratulations to the Yellow Jacket Boys Basketball Team for twenty-three wins. You never won twenty-three when you played, David. So anyways, I want to congratulate them.
Oh, that hurts.
That's good.
Chris was in my class.
Is that everything for you all?
Ms. Smith?
First, I'd like to congratulate Sarah Lockenhauer for the completion of her Texas Municipal Clerk Certification. She finished that almost a year earlier than expected, so her hard work has not gone unnoticed by us and everyone else. So I want to congratulate her on completing that task. Another huge shout-out to Darrell and his crew for the event that was held at the airport on Saturday. It was loads of fun for my family and everybody else in town. It is just good to get out there and see, and talk to the people. Also, Stephenville Parks has partnered with Tarleton Rec for Texanville Kids Spring Break Camp. You can go online and register for that. Spring break for Stephenville I C is in two weeks. If you're looking for something for your kids to do during the day, they do offer early, early drop-off and late pickup for an additional fee, but that is an option for people who have longer working hours. We also have, the Tifmas team from our city is out on deployment for, and staging for possible wild land fires. So let's keep those guys in your thoughts and prayers. Continue to pray for Mayor Sabine and his recovery. And I also like to wish my son a happy eleventh birthday, so happy birthday, Logan.
Ms. Greenoff?
Uh, I'd like to, uh, say I didn't get to go to the, the big flying and the car show out there. I was out of town baseball this weekend. But everybody I've talked to has just been so excited about it and glad to see, see that, that little, that event growing for us. And pretty exciting. And I'd just like to say, get well soon, Doug.
Ms. Nix?
I have nothing, Mayor Protem.
Well, as always, Leanne stills my thunder on everything, so I want to echo a couple of her, her items. Congratulations to Micah Parsons, the Food Network Baking Challenge. Very impressive for, for the young man, and we're, and we're very proud of you, Stephenville's proud of you, so thank you very much. Mayor Sabine, continue, keep you in our prayers and keep him the seat warm for you. It's very warm tonight. It's been a, a long meeting. Thank you for the first responders, the hospital staff, for getting him where he needed to be quickly. Ms. King and I were there within a couple of hours, and it was amazing to see how well he was taken care of. So thank you all very much. That being said, we're gonna recess from the regular City Council meeting, move to executive session in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Beans Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes annotated in the ordinance with Section five five one dot zero seven two, Deliberation Regarding Real Property to Deliberate the Purchase, Exchange, Lease or Value of Real Property Two with Real Property Located in City Edition. Section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney to consult over a pending or contemplated litigation. We shall return.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we authorize the city manager to execute a real estate contract as discussed in the executive session.
Second.